It validates my But I made one too, I made three sets here of that same thousand. Is it?
I don't know.
Yeah. So I And my
Well, we see
That's why I get down. It's not just the I was getting hot. Yeah, I don't quite. Oh. This is I don't know, you can't really stop. Okay, I'm very high.
It's supposed to get bad.
No, no, I meant to listen to you.
Does it have using that here?
Oh, well, we did the same time. Oh, that's funny. No. That's fun.
Six o'clock. Call this meeting in order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our God indivisible and eternal.
All right, first up is approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second motion. Been moved in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Agenda is approved. Next up is public hearing for vote voting infrastructure and assport grants. If anyone that would like to step up and make comments, anyone on the board here? I guess we have no No one wants to say anything about it. All right?
Yep.
Then we will close the hearing. Next up is consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I gotta get added to the work session meeting minutes.
You've got
She's not even looking.
What's that?
She's not even looking.
No, I said, I heard you say work session.
That's all.
Oh, I missed you?
You missed me.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. We'll get your rate out.
I think that was it.
Okay, thank you.
So there's an amendment to the session meeting minutes. Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, they consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no?
No.
Consent agenda approved. Next up, messages from the mayor, council, and city manager. Since we don't have a city manager this evening, let's start with Jeff.
Sure. Um. I had a comment, but I talked to the DPW director, I gotta take care of, so we're good.
All right. That's it?
Yeah. Yeah, your turn.
I got a couple things. One is Scott's not here, so I guess I'll have Brenda make a note of it.
Will do.
Can we pursue having the partially dismantled Royal Tire Building? Looked at being the rest of the way dismantled. It's pretty much of an eyesore. I understand, I think that when they started taking it, taking it down, the people that were taking it down didn't have the permit to take it down. So they had to stop, but I think it's to the point now where it's been sitting there for three months the way it is, and it looks terrible, so I think it needs addressed. And the other thing I have is I'd like to see if we could add to our next work session a discussion on having control over what Tifa does with their money, other than just the initial approval of their budget. But it's a personal thing with me. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way about it or not, but I just wanna have it as a discussion item so we can discuss it. That's all I have.
John?
Nothing tonight?
Nothing tonight from me, sir.
Good. Nothing tonight.
Dinner we're gonna.
All right, well, that leaves me. I just wanna let people know that the annual leaf pickup will be this year, April fifteenth to the twenty-ninth. And the brush pickup will be on May first. They'll be making one pass through town. So have your brush out by April thirtieth. All right. At this point, we have public comments. Any public? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, stable road.
Uh, just an update from the county. The, we're looking at setting up a Parks and Recreation Commission for the county, for the county parks. Uh, we've really got a, just a, ahead of that, pretty much part of our Parks and Rec. And there's a lot of things that I think are getting missed, and we don't really have much strategic planning going on, and it seems like, you know, put a fire out here, put a fire, oh, we have a problem over here. I think if we get some planning uh, going on, maybe look down the road, do some capital improvements to some of the parks and stuff that they, even, even the regular maintenance is, seems to be not being kept up very well. So we're gonna set up, it looks like, a new commission to, to address those issues. Um, the other thing, just an update on the, uh, the trash. It looks like we probably, I, I'm not sure, the commission has to vote on this, but it looks like we're probably going to add another crew to the cell, uh, the landfill, that they're trying to get finished, uh, which will move it up about three weeks, I think, so probably, it looks like probably end of July. I mean, let's cross our fingers, but probably end of July versus end of August, uh, because they're gonna throw a whole new crew at it. And it'll only cost us a hundred and fifty dollars, so.
Question.
Yes, sir.
On, on your, your parks commission, who's gonna be sitting on that?
Uh, it's, I just read, it's a, it's a whole list, certain people have to be there, part of the, it, it, I can get that information to you. I mean, it's a whole bunch of different people that have to be there. Now, one of the things that, during the public comment, uh, that we had, uh, when we talked about this, was the issue of there's not really any of the public on the commission. And so it looks like we may end up, uh, adding a, let's say, an advisory board, maybe? That would consist of the constituents or the public. And let that board then work with this board, uh, to bring stuff to the table, so. That's the plan.
Is there any plan to have any, the municipal involvement?
Um, I'm not sure yet.
Gonna be just county people?
No, I think, uh, you know, because we've got parks all the way from down south all the way up to minors, I mean, so uh, I think the people that, you know, are, are, use those parks should, uh, should have a say in what's going on, so. Hopefully, it's still, it's just in the infancy stages. Hopefully, it'll get done soon, but, uh, I'll, I'll bring more information as I get it, so.
Keep fighting for us.
Yep, I am, buddy.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Now, we will move on to old business. Old Business State Revolving Loan Fund. Anything we need to do on that?
No, it was just too much for your information to let you know that that's something that won't be pursued because we're basically not eligible for those loans, so. So our improvements will, instead of being done as this loan might allow for like a big massive push, it'll be done like we normally do it on a yearly basis with what funds are available to make improvements.
Thank you. Next up is new business. Tag day requests from American Legion.
I'll make a motion to allow, uh, the third tag day for the year, June sixteenth, for the American Legion.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? Tag day request is approved. Next up is Resolution twenty-three-ten Leaf Removal Services.
I'll move to approve the Resolution twenty-three-ten, the new contract for the percentage increases as listed on the Resolution.
Second. Been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I'd like to actually, uh, see the number one, part of number one amended where it says weather may require adjustments to actual collection dates, to whether will require adjustments to, you know, the actual collection dates. I, last, last fall, I mean, we only get thirty days, we can put leaves out. And last fall, we had two days of rain and three days of snow during that thirty-day period that they didn't do anything because of the weather. But they still got the same amount of money. And if, if your stuff was out after that date, you had to remove it yourself. I just, I think that there needs to be some flexibility in the actual end date, depending on the weather.
I think from my recollection, I think they've always worked with us pretty good. I mean, it is, so, you know, if the weather's bad, they, they picked up after the fact.
I know the, when it was, can't even remember the name. Who was doing it before?
Double L.
Yeah, when Double L was doing it, yeah. They, you know, they would come around and, and repick stuff up, but I put stuff out on the, what I thought was the last day, last year, last fall, and I was a, after, I was the day after the last day. And I had to go remove it myself. So I just, I just feel that there should be some flexibility in there, and it should not just be a from and to, and, I mean, if it, if it rained and snowed every day of the thirty days, nobody's ever gonna get their leaves done. So you know, it, but you're gonna pay for it anyhow, the way it's written. Just you know, my feeling is I, I think it, it needs amended to be, the wording needs to be changed in it to where it says something about they will work with us and come back and do it without it being a hundred and fifty dollars an hour or whatever it was in their contract. Somewhere in there, it says something about.
Will, what's your thought?
Uh, taking a look at the contract, it does, um,
Limit eight.
Pardon?
Number eight.
I was looking at number one.
Oh, okay.
Um, the, up at the top, it does say that they're gonna pick up once per week, um, and that the may require adjustment part I don't think eliminates the once-per-week provision. In other words, they can pick up, they can't, if it's snowing on Monday, they've gotta pick up sometime that week. Would be my first thought. Now, you, you certainly could end up with, uh, you know, squabbling over that if it's too much snow and if they can't collect all week. Um, but that would be where it does say that it may adjust, that's I would, I would argue that that's within the week, and we'd have a good argument that they still need to collect how many, you know, weeks that is, as if they're doing it once per week. Now, what was the other ones?
Number eight's got the act of God disaster and chronic weather.
So that covers if it falls more than a week behind, right?
I'm not worried about how many times they're coming through per week. I'm worried about there still being leaves left out at the end of it, because there were three or four days that people couldn't get their leaves out and that they didn't go around and vacuum leaves because of the weather. And I just think there should be, I mean, the contract is for a set amount of days. And I think that it should have some leeway in it to where
Right.
you know, if there are that many inclement weather days during that period of time, that they're still gonna come around and get the stuff.
They generally come on that last day, the, I mean, this was November twenty-four. I don't know what day of the week that was, or if that's sort of their last pickup day. I don't know if they stagger that by the different places that they do these contracts.
Pretty sure.
Typically, I know that there's usually an announcement, this is the last day we're picking up, and they give you that in advance. I don't know if this provides, this doesn't seem provided. That day isn't a day they can pick up, but they would have another day.
I can kinda see, oh, they might miss some spots, because I think they go around with a pickup truck or whatever they drive around the day before, that they're gonna go through there. And they'll say, well, we've gotta hit this street and this street and this street. And then somebody puts stuff out on a street that was clean when they drove through the town. And they don't know it's there. And so I think that there's a possibility that they may miss something that.
I don't know, do they, do they get the whole city in a day? Like, do they do one day a week? It's multiple days that they're going around.
Generally, they start at the north end and, and work their way.
So, yeah. So it's not a one day?
It's not a one day through the sweep. It's depending on how many leaves are in any portion of the city. They may spend two days on the north end.
Right.
It depends on what, on that, three or four trucks.
Right.
I mean, they, they can probably, depending on where you're at in that month, I think I've seen them probably go through the city in one day. In the middle of the week, when people don't have the time to be out, you know, working on their lawns and stuff, the piles are less and less, so they can probably, with two trucks, probably make it through the city. You know, in a day.
We're essentially paying them to go through the city four times, right? It's not necessarily
Right.
the days amount, it's we're paying.
It says it's once per week, and it's four weeks, right?
Right.
And uh, so, I mean, it is a little unclear on the fact of what happens if, you know, if you have your stuff out there on the last day of the week, are they, somebody, are they gonna pick it up or not?
I think they, in the past, they've done a, a, a good job, and I think we've been very pleased with the service they've given us. I think they've been more than willing to work with us, so. I mean, at, at this point, I'm certainly in support of approving this resolution, but
I don't
tell me.
I don't think the price increase is, is on line by any means.
I do not.
I'm thinking that problems could be solved by talking with Scott, too, I, you know, to
Didn't work last fall.
Didn't work, huh?
Nope.
Well.
My client was told that I had to remove the leaves or she would be ticketed. And she lives on your road.
Oh, I know, yeah. Yeah, I remember you going out there and picking those up. You gonna pick them up?
Yeah, I picked them up.
That's what I thought.
Cheese flyers, do you know how many people did he have to talk to about leaves that occur by the end of the season?
I don't know that we talked to anybody.
Unless there's any objection, huh? Call for a roll call vote, please.
Signda?
Yes.
Malali?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Huddleberg?
Yes.
Connel?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three-ten is approved. Resolution twenty-three-eleven, assessing services.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, Resolution twenty-three-dash-eleven, assessing services. I'll support that.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I believe we can get an answer for you. I don't have any problem with any of it, or the increases that they're proposing or anything else. The only thing I would like verified is it says it's starting at an annual fee of forty thousand dollars, and then it'll go up two and a half percent per year. I would like to know what it's at right now. For all I know, it could have been thirty thousand dollars the last time, and, you know, we're looking at a twenty-five percent increase to get it started at forty thousand dollars. It doesn't explain that in the in the proposal.
Brenda, do they just go through all the building permits, everything that's been pulled, and then look at that stuff individually? Or how do they do it?
That's a good question. This is really not, uh, my expertise, but I can certainly find out for you in that, that question as well, Councilmember Brown, uh, as far as where they're at right now, and, and have Scott report it out to you.
I think since this, uh, current agreement doesn't expire until September thirtieth, we have some time to
Mm-hmm.
to do this, so I would say we put this aside until we can get those answers.
Yep.
Everyone all, all right with that?
Yes.
I have to make a motion to do that?
I think so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, I made the first one, right? I'll make a motion to table, uh, twenty-three-eleven until we get the information necessary.
And I'll support that.
All right. Do we need a roll call on that?
Probably just a voice vote.
All those in favor of this motion, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? Resolution twenty-three-eleven is approved. Resolution twenty-three-twelve, twenty-three, twenty-two-three Parks and Recreation Grant Applications.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three-twelve for the twenty-two-three Parks and Recreation Grant Applications. As, as admitted.
Second. Been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question or comment on part of this to, um, the funnel field bathrooms. Uh, it shows a concession area. First, I, I don't know, it says that there's gonna be two bathrooms, so I'm assuming that they're both gonna be the same as what is pictured here. And I'm not so sure that I don't know if Will can chime in on what kind of liability we may have as far as having a concession area, and who's gonna be responsible for it, who's gonna be liable for it, who's gonna run it? You know, who's gonna be responsible for cleaning it and everything else, since we don't have a concession area at either one of them now. My preference would be to take out the concession area and make both the bathrooms places big, so they were not just both one-stall bathrooms.
Uh, Scott, just to chime in, are you, are you looking at the, the funnel field improvement?
Yes.
Be the last page.
That's, I think that was put in there just for information. That's really not what we're dealing with on this proposal. I mean, that was part of the spark grant and not part of what we're doing tonight, I believe. Am I right on that, Brenda? Do you know?
I don't know exactly, but, um, but yeah, if it was part of the sparks, that was denied, so I'm sure they're going in a different direction with um, what he has stated here.
The proposal's to resubmit funnel field.
Right. So that I don't know for sure.
The way I looked at it was, this is what is being resubmitted.
I didn't understand it that way. What I understood is that got turned down, and so now we're going after Gia Goodrich Parks for number one, and number two, we're going for White Lake Minnesvo Marina for grants. And I think we're gonna have to look at what gets done in funnel field some other time unless we're gonna fuck anything ourselves. That's why I just Steve, last sentence. We will be able to reapply.
Last sentence says resubmit for funnel field, now, um, all the way down to the bottom. Now, therefore, we resolve, resubmit to funnel field.
Oh, yeah.
So this, so we're just resub, resubmitting the spark grant to, or for the spark grant, be my guess.
And we're not approving funds, we're just asking.
Asking for money, yeah.
And not, not for that part of it.
Yeah, all of it, from what I see. It's the same thing we asked for last time, they're asking for again, from what I see in here, for funnel field. They're just resubmitting the last again, what they submitted last time, is what I'm reading.
Now that you point that out, I already see what you're saying.
Yeah. So the funnel field will be the last, all those who, three, third page on the back.
Oh, and
expanded, resurface, park, the land expanded surface.
Yeah, when, when that comes up, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And at this point, I think it's a, it's a timeframe of, now, I don't think you'd wanna table this one. It's more of you're giving permission for him to submit grant applications, and you don't wanna miss a deadline where right, and it, and I know that you mentioned to me that he's getting on them tomorrow, so I think there's a deadline to submit these. So if there's questions about what exactly you want, uh, right now, we're asking for the money, so, and just trying to get into that part of the process.
And actually, Scott, as far as concession, uh, along with bathrooms, the Little League Field does have a concession.
I'm over at Little League Field, and probably
I don't know. I don't know that it's regularly used anymore than I know it used to be.
Yep.
I just don't know what the city's liability is that way, if there is, because, you know, does it has to be, does it have to be licensed? You know, if, if you're serving food, I would assume it has to have some kind of a license with it.
Only if you're preparing food.
Only if you're preparing.
So if we sell you veggie chips, you're good.
Which, so you can't cook hot dogs, or
There's probably some, there'd be some agreement, and people would
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that
agreement where people would have the right to use it.
Yep.
Sign up through the city.
It's not actually the city that would be doing that anyway.
Right.
It's the organizations, so I would think if anybody needed, uh, some type of a license, it would be them, not us.
I'm just not sure where, you know, where it leaves the city liability wise, it's all, that's my only concern.
Yeah, it would just be a contractual thing that the city would, the city would, anybody that used it would have to sign something, and they would take on the liability for that.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Signda?
Yes.
Connel?
Yes.
Malali?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Huddleberg?
Yes.
Yes, Resolution twenty-three-twelve is approved. Next up is public comment. This is where if there's any students in the room, they come up to the podium and give the name and class. If you need your, if you need your paper signed, that's, this is the time you get to do what you gotta do.
Yeah, we know that teacher doesn't tell you that.
Uh, so my name's Lucas Husband. I go to Montague. I'm in Mr. Brunson's, uh, government class. I just came here to take notes and get these signatures for this paper.
All right, we'll sign your paper when we're, we're done.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Miranda Moore. I'm from Montague High School, and I'm in Mr. Brunson's government class. He told us to come here, take notes, and get your signature.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Kowalski. I'm from Mr. Brunson's government class, and he did in fact tell us to come here, take notes, get signatures.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the council? Last comments? Alright, we are adjourned.